Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Placer County Planning Commission on this November 20th day. We're going to start out by having a salute to the flag. Wayne, would you like to lead us in that?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next, we'll have roll call. See if we have a quorum today.
Mr. Gray. Mr. Nader.
Here.
Mr. Moss.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Mr. Ricucci.
Mr. Denial.
Here.
Mr. Sevison.
Yes. Okay, we do have a quorum, so we're going to continue. We're going to have a report from the planning director. EJ, looking dapper today.
A week ago, so I don't have a lot to update you on, except at the Board of Supervisors meeting on Tuesday, they continued the Sheridan Plan, Community Plan update, in order to allow further discussions with the property owner of the 33 acres to the south that was zoned industrial. That was continued to January 9th. The next Planning Commission meeting is going to be December 11th. We had an appeal on a residential care home. We also have the Cambridge Estates Gate that's proposed. That's all I have. We've got a big agenda. Unless there's any questions, we can get started with the agenda items.
Any questions, EJ? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience that would care to address the Commission on items not on the agenda today, other than those? Feel free to come forward and give us your name. Seeing no one coming forward, we'll move on then to...
Okay, Mr. Chair, before we get to the next item, I'm going to have to recuse myself on this. I do have property in the project area that's being discussed, so I will step down into the back of the audience there.
This is the Riolo...
No, this is the Vineyards.
Well, Riolo first? No, Riolo second. I'm sorry, you're right. Okay. I understand. Thank you, Mr. Denial. We still have a quorum.
Barely.
We are going to have the Placer Vineyard Specific Plan Amendment. And, Michelle, are you...
It's me.
Our fearless leader?
I'll try. So, good morning.
Good morning.
Bear with me, I'm not the best at a PowerPoint. I think it has to work. Hmm? There we go. So, good morning, Planning Commission members. My name's Michelle Kingsbury, one of the newest members of the Planning Department, and today I'll provide an overview of the action before you, which is the Placer Vineyard Specific Plan Amendment request. This is similar to our informational workshop that we did back in October with some additional information that we'll add to. So, as you're aware, back in 2007, this project was originally approved. For some geographic reference, Baseline Road, Rollegra, this is in the unincorporated county area. We have Sacramento County line down here and the Sutter County over here. It's in our west Placer area. The item that's next on the agenda, Riolo Vineyards, is down in this area, so we're in the same area geographically of the county. Up at the top, up here, make this work, up at the top up here is City of Roseville this year, Vista Specific Plan, just for some geographic context of where we're at. Back in 2007, the project was originally approved. It's over 5,000 acres. Over 14,000 residential units were approved, a combination of low-density residential, medium-density residential, high-density residential. There is a significant amount, over 3.5 million square feet of commercial retail and office, largely planned along the baseline corridor. We have your high-traffic areas up in this area. You can see in the purples and orange, those are your power centers, your retail commercial up in those areas. The project proposed over 30,000 residential population at full build-out. Full build-out would probably occur over a 20- to 40-year span. It's a large project. It'll take quite a bit of time to build out. They proposed standalone park in public facilities. There was a standalone youth center, senior center, that were all proposed in the plan area when originally approved. There's one high school, two middle schools, and six elementary schools that are proposed. In 2007, the total amount of active park acreage that was approved was 210 acres. They had over 709 acres of open space that was approved as well, and over, I want to say, over 43 miles of trails as well. Since 2007, as you're aware, the economy went to, I think, what has been dubbed the Great Recession, so not a lot of activity occurred with any projects during that time, including these large specific plan-approved projects. However, back in 2012, we saw activities start to occur with the developer and its representatives coming forward and looking at ways to retool this project to make it more financially feasible in our current economic climate, both on a short-term and long-term basis. Back in February 2012, we did an amendment to their development agreement, which looked at the phasing of the project. Originally, excuse me, originally, all the core backbone infrastructure was to be put in up front of the project. However, in 2012, it was approved to change it where the infrastructure and phasing of the development would occur kind of in a linear path typical of a large subdivision, where we would just proceed down. Instead of putting in all the core backbone infrastructure up front, it would go along with development. In September 2012, there were more, I could call them, technical amendments to the development agreement that were approved, changing some percentages of owner participation approvals, and also implementing what they called their internal land equalization program. When 2007, when the project was approved, that item was to come back at a later date. It's an internal program with the developers of how they, excuse me, share costs with the lands for public facilities that are dedicated, but that was the more detail in there. In December, what's not noted on here is a couple other actions to go through. In December of 2013, our Board of Supervisors took direction and provided direction to staff as this project is retooling itself and looking at different ways, which was kind of the impetus of these changes that were proposed of how we do business, in terms of whether the board would be amenable or not to looking at lowering park acreage to our general plan standard of five acres per thousand, which you'll see is the proposal here, looking at ways we implement our public facilities from a full developer construct to, you know, with parks, and I'll get a little bit more detail, you know, the developer will require to construct the neighborhood parks, but pay a fee for the community parks to the county, and the county assume the obligation for constructing those at the appropriate time. So, with that direction from our board back in 2013, these proposed amendments came forward, which we'll walk through. One of the other items that has been accomplished in part of the original development agreement was the developer was required to, before the first development phase was approved, to get their master plans approved. To date, we have both the transit sewer and drainage master plans that have all been approved by the Board of Supervisors. Just to reiterate kind of the key goals of the applicant in terms of the proposed amendments that you'll see today, it's really from a financial perspective. Number one, to prove the project's financial overall feasibility. Number two, to reduce long-term maintenance costs. So, you'll see in some of the types of items that are proposed for elimination, it also helps with the long-term maintenance obligations that the county would be assuming through service districts, that ultimately those costs would be passed down to the property owners and residents in that area, and to retain that competitive edge with the adjacent developments such as Sierra Vista, to kind of get more in line with what that development is, so they are competitive with what is going on out there. The proposed land use map for 2014 is before you, and we'll go through the key changes that...bear with me, catch up on my slide. It's important to reiterate what's not being changed. None of that, they're not proposing any increases in the residential unit capacity. They're still capped at the 14,132. No increase in the commercial retail or office square footage. It's still proposed at over 3.5 million square feet. All school site locations will remain the same, and the number of schools proposed are to remain the same. The landscape berm around the SPA areas is, no changes proposed there, as well as the requirement that was in their original DA back in 2007 for their locust road circulation study, and we'll get into a little bit more detail on that later, but no proposed changes in those key areas. It's important to remember. So, just jumping into what changes the developer is proposing, the first area is in the parks section. They're proposing to reduce the active park acreage from originally approved at 210 acres to 159 acres. This does meet our minimum general plan standards of five acres per thousand residents. The 159 acres will be a combination of three things. There'll be onsite park acreage, as well as an in-loof fee, which is a credit of about 18 acres that is going to be paid through an in-loof fee, and then a credit of two acres for their providing a park maintenance facility in the corporation yard. It's pretty standard of what we look at with our subdivisions, kind of some combinations there, and that's what they're proposing to meet their overall obligation. How they're reducing that park acreage is a number of ways. They're eliminating or combining with neighborhood parks, those mini-parks, which are really small parks. We're looking at consolidating those kind of standalone facilities that were originally proposed for senior and youth centers into one center to provide some operational efficiencies as well, that would be located in probably in the west community park. And that 18 acres of in-loof fee that I mentioned earlier, it's really designed to partner with the school district, and you saw in your package a letter from the school district supporting, working together to achieve that partnership as those school sites come on board. We have parks planned adjacent to the school sites, and how can we use that in-loof fee to enhance and work together and get some joint use agreements with each other to share those facilities, and it also helps keeping in with that goal of, you know, operational efficiencies, reducing costs, and working together. The underlying land uses that are in those, so where they're proposing to reduce a park... if I can get this to work. So, if they're reducing one up here, the underlying land use would just revert back to what's surrounding it. So, if low-density residential was surrounding it, then you'll see that low-density residential is the underlying land use that would revert back. But again, no increase in units. What it does is just disperse the same amount of units over a greater area, reducing the density slightly. Get back. And through, as noted in your package, the developer is proposing, and our county board supervisors, it was amenable to continuing and working together if creating a park district to ultimately assume the maintenance and obligation and running those park and rec programs, maintaining the parks over a long-term time. This is something we'll work together, if approved, over time with the county staff and applicant staff of how to format, what type of formation, working through the LAFCO process, et cetera. But it is something you'll see that, you know, to run the active rec programs, which we currently, you know, don't do in our normal model of creating this separate park district to take control of those park amenities and programs out there. What this map does exhibit in the red area is just where the mini-parks are proposed to be eliminated, so it's just more illustrative of what would go away. However, we do have back here the west, large west community park, the east community park. The west community park would be where some of our consolidated facilities, we would look to be putting it there. One of the other areas that we're looking at, some proposed changes, is in our trails, open space, and landscape median areas. The applicant is proposing to replace the bike passos or separated landscape areas with just a traditional Class 1 bike pass. It does reduce the operational and maintenance costs by eliminating that landscaping. They're reducing the mileage of the Class 1 bike pass from about 43 miles down to 35 miles, and we'll go into it and exhibit later, we'll show where those changes are. They're looking at narrowing the landscape meeting on Baseline Road and Watt Avenue from 20 to 14 feet. This would be consistent, which in the adjacent City of Roseville specific plan for Sierra Vista, be consistent with what they're proposing to provide some continuity between the two developments. They're also proposing to eliminate the pedestrian overcrossing bridge, to be consistent as well with the Sierra Vista plan, which was not approved subsequent to this project's approval, was not approved with that condition. They're looking at how they achieve the reduction in trails in bike paths, eliminating some redundant paths, but adding a few north-south connectors. They've enhanced the multipurpose trails, providing for some increased connectivity along the outer skirts of the project area, and they're reducing slightly the open space area from 709 acres down to about 693. This map here kind of illustrates where some of those, it's a little difficult to see, but some key highlights. At the top is the before project approved back in 2007, and then the bottom is the proposed amendments. Bear with me. So, in this area, one of the key highlights is when it was originally approved, there was a gap in the multipurpose trail, or what we commonly call to our equestrian trail, that's along the outskirts of the project area. The developer, working with staff, was able to find a way to squeeze in some trail connectivity and increase this trail connectivity all the way up to our Riolo Vineyard specific plan that you'll be hearing later. So, you'll see up here, there's the increase. There were redundant trails that were eliminated, for instance, up here, going through an open space area. We did have this trail connectivity, this trail connectivity, and so that was proposed to be eliminated, both from a challenge of putting the trail in there and from a cost perspective. However, they were able to increase, you know, one of the areas here, a north-south connector ability that wasn't there before, but to be able to add that there. It is an overall reduction, but staff felt pretty comfortable that there is still a robust, for lack of a better word, trail system and bike pass system. Lastly, one of the other changes was, there's a five-acre parcel within the town center that's proposed to be changed from a high-density residential parcel, or, excuse me, from a, it was originally a rec center parcel, and now it will go back to a high-density residential project consistent with the surrounding land uses. Again, no increase in units. It would just be dispersing otherwise those high-density residential units planned in that area across a greater landmass. And the rec center, we'd ultimately be looking to relocate that into that west community park in a more consolidated facility. And that is, it's up in this area. I think up here, you can see it's...clicker challenge today, I'm sorry. You can see up here, it's that parcel there, and it's now proposed to just be high-density residential, consistent with what's surrounding it. We did go a few times to our west Placer MAC, and lastly, on November 12th, we went for an action item with these proposed changes. The MAC did vote two to one to decline the applicant's request. There was, and I think this summarized it in a simplistic way, but there was a significant amount of discussion from the members and MAC members, from the audience members and MAC members, and a few key areas. One of them was, we had some discussion about just the drainage, drainage master plan, and how those would be implemented. One of the areas that we had significant discussion on was that locust road circulation study. While the applicant was not required in their current DA to initiate that study until a later date, they have initiated it. Prior to this, they're under contract. Staff has approved the scope of work, and they're underway on it. Unfortunately, we don't have results today. I know our Public Works Director is here as well, if there are questions about that, to help answer any that you may have. There is also concern with the reduction in trails and park acreage in the plan area that was talked about. We have received public correspondence and full copies were provided to you and in your packages, kind of reiterating on these key elements that we received a public comment on. There was also a letter in there, I believe, regarding water and the drought, you know, and this project being as large as it is. The applicant is working with PCWA, and of course, you know, would have to have all adequate infrastructure in place to serve the project, just wanted to clarify that. The actions that are before you today, just in summary, that we're looking to seek your either approval or comments on, is to adopt the addendum that's included in your package, which includes the revised mitigation and monitoring program. You'll see in that that there are some changes to some of the mitigation measures, specifically to implement kind of the change in how we are looking at potentially reducing park acreage and how to construct these public facilities, from a developer construct to more of a pay a fee, and the county will ultimately construct those facilities. We're looking to approve the amendments that we've just gone through for the specific plan and the land use and development standards that were included in your package. And lastly, we're looking for the material terms that were included in your package to approve for the second amended and restated development agreement that essentially memorializes all these proposed changes. There is an errata sheet that you were handed this morning that, while looked quite cumbersome, it does focus in three key areas. First area is just kind of, I think, clarifying the intent of the new mitigation fees and making sure, of course, when you press send and you press print, you read it again and realize you probably should have been a bit more clear. And staff has worked with the applicant to come up with these proposed changes that both staff and the applicant are supportive of, but they do fall in three key areas, and certainly at your discretion, we can go through those in more detail. But one of the areas is just clarifying the intent of a fee program. The bulk of the changes are in clarifying the intent of the park open space programs, making sure that what we desired is specifically memorialized in the agreement and how the fee programs would be implemented and used, and what types of credits and reimbursements would come forward. And lastly, just to memorialize what the sewer master plan was approved recently, and the list of required improvements, to make sure we were consistent with either those. There is a list of just some changes to make sure we're consistent with both those documents. But at your discretion, we can certainly go through them. We have representatives from our Parks Division here as well that can speak as well on those items. And with that, I think Karen might have had a couple comments, turned over, or no?
And just to outline briefly for you what that is and what you're being charged with doing today. Under state law, the county is authorized to enter into a binding agreement with property owners regarding the development of property. Such agreements are essentially a form of what we refer to as vested rights. This commission is familiar with vested tentative maps, which vests the rights of the map for the term of the map. The development agreement does the same. It vests the rights that are approved for the underlying project within the development agreement for the life of the development agreement. The big distinction between a vested tentative map and a development agreement is frankly the term. The county has historically required development agreements for specific plans for one reason. Specific plans will typically take quite a few years to build out, sometimes 10, sometimes 15, sometimes 20 years. The development agreement allows the parties to extend the term of the entitlements. In the case of Placer Vineyards, the initial term is 20 years with two five-year extensions. Thus, both parties have a certain assurance as to what is anticipated to be developed under the terms of the development agreement and as set forth in the policy documents. What you're here to do today is not to make a determination as to whether it's appropriate to have a development agreement, because that decision was made in 2007 with the very first one. What we're here today to do is to consider amendments to the development agreement. As Michelle mentioned, there have been literally months of negotiations with members of staff and the developers to come forward with the recommended development agreement that you have in your packet. The errata is to be considered as additional terms. As Michelle mentioned, some of them are very technical, and frankly, these development agreements are 80 to 90 pages long. We all have been working, the developers have been working alongside with staff to go through and ensure that we have a consistent, fully-vetted development agreement, and in that process, we found some items that we've listed on the errata. You can consider the errata to be additional terms that have been agreed to by staff and the parties, and hence, we have a recommendation for approval of that. Should the parties raise other issues that are not within the errata, they are either issues that we've agreed to disagree on, new issues, and those you will have to deliberate on as they come up. There are findings that are required. State law requires that a development agreement come first to the Planning Commission for a review, and there are specific findings that are set forth in your staff report for you to consider within your overall recommendations to the board. And I'll turn it back to Michelle for any comments about the proposal and...
I think we'll open it up for questions, and one item I forgot to mention on the parks is just to clarify kind of the roles. With the neighborhood parks and trails, the developer would be required to construct those with their, as they're coming through with their specific development areas. We have, in terms of participating developers, 21 or 22, that would be signing development agreements. The community parks would be the one that they would pay a fee, and the county would take over that obligation to construct commensurate with service population and fee accumulation. I just wanted to make sure I clarified that. But with that, certainly to open it up with any questions that you may have.
Any questions? Wayne first, I guess.
Michelle, can you go back to your map? It's not a critical question, but one just for informational. We got a letter from SMUD expressing some concern about their high tension, high-power lines that they have running through the project. Is that what that green sort of area is that's kind of going at an angle through the development?
There's a few power line areas. This is, I think that's the one that's probably most prominent to see, and I apologize, I'm always geographically challenged as to finding anything. I think Kent, you might know where the other ones are. Right there.
It's, I'm sorry, is it that green sort of angle that's coming?
Yes, you can see it.
Oh, it's going straight, not angled?
No, I think she's mistaken.
Oh, excuse me, there he is.
Yeah.
Right. Because they were talking about adding some power transmission lines through there in addition to what they already have, so I assume that's been accommodated in that space.
It's a wide space that, I mean, they'll have an easement, of course, that they would be able to do what they can in those areas that would probably supersede the rights.
Okay. Any other questions, Michelle, this time?
Yeah, let's...
Oh, I'm sorry, Richard.
Let me see, I think this is probably in the original development agreement, maybe not in the errata, but I noticed that within the area, there's non-participating, and the development agreement talks about the people that are non-participating actually having to pay in for certain improvements, like roads that are adjacent to their property. How does that work?
For lack of a better phrase, it's more of just making sure that if they come forward, that there's a fair share and equitable distribution of costs, so we've been looking, you know, the developer has sunk in a significant amount of cost to get to this point, and we would look with those, correct me if I'm wrong, Karen, at just making sure that there's a fair share, equitable portion that they would be sharing in those costs. And I think it's memorialized in the current proposed development agreement as well.
So, it means, I guess what I'm kind of interpreting, there might be a couple of those parcels that come forward with proposals in the future?
Correct, if they do.
And if that's the case, then they would have to buy into, per se, the improvements that have already been developed?
Correct, because they would be benched.
And that's what the purpose of that is for? So, it's not the existing non-participating paper that people are going to get a bill, it's just if they make a change or commit for a permit?
I believe so, yes.
Okay.
This is Commissioner Johnson, this is a fairly common mechanism with the larger specific plans, where you have a certain amount of property owners who, for lack of a better term, are considered participating because they've essentially invested in the initial entitlements for the project, and there will be properties within it that are not part of the development agreement. But that is why you have the mechanisms within it to, one, make the property, the developers who fronted the initial investment to make them whole for those who are coming after the fact, and yes, they will have to come forward. A non-participating property owner would come forward for subsequent entitlements that would require amendments to specific plan, either a new development agreement or joining into this one. All those mechanisms are incorporated within the DA, and again, it's because this DA will live on with the project for 20 to 30 years, so it's intended to capture the what-if, you know, or what do we do about the subsequent owners when, if and when they're ready to develop on their own?
Okay, thank you. And then, you know, I probably will be talking about locust road... And then, you know, I probably will be talking about Locust Road later, and so, you know, probably want to have a rundown on what that process is going to include, but we can go on at this point and I'll ask a question when the time is right.
There's one thing I wanted to mention, too, that bears remembering. This project was approved in 2007 and three lawsuits ensued challenging the entitlements. And as a result, basically, time stopped for this development. And it was the lawsuits, the final lawsuits were settled in 2012 when we went to the board and some members of the commission may remember, we came forward with changes to the biological resources provisions. That was the settlement of the final lawsuit. Under the DA, there is a provision that allows the property owners to toll, in other words, stop in time the term of the development agreement running because frankly, when they're in the middle of a lawsuit, not much is going to happen until you finish your lawsuit. Sequel lawsuits typically take a good amount of time to settle. That period of time is not unusual. So this project, in essence, stopped in time, the term of the agreement told. So many of the provisions you'll find in the DA that say you will do this, you will do that, they're still in place, but they may not have been triggered because nothing was happening during this period of the lawsuit.
So they would then trigger when the final approval took place?
Well, they'll trigger now depending, I mean, we can go into several of them. Various provisions have various triggers. Those, unless we have amended them, those triggers are in place. Some triggers have changed. But I think what I'm saying is if the trigger didn't change, the trigger is still there. It's just that it didn't commence because the trigger didn't trigger, for lack of a better term.
So it actually didn't, the countdown didn't start, so. Another question I have, if I'm not interrupting anyone else here, if, as they go through this, the future years, assuming they do, and a specific parcel, let's say for the sake of discussion, was shown to have single-family homes or apartments on it, something like that, and at the time they finally get around to developing it, they decide that they want to put condominiums on it or something else. Do they have to come back here to vest that or is that negotiable?
Oh, you're going to love my answer. It depends. There are provisions in the specific plan which allow for review of amendments. There are certain amendments that are considered to be, I can't think of the term offhand, but they're not major amendments.
Administrative modifications.
Thank you. Administrative modifications that can be made on a staff level. Some will be considered to be subsequent entitlements that are subject to further review, including sequo review. One of the instruments that this particular project has is an implementation and procedures manual. And that was approved by the board and it's actually a very handy manual that allows for planning staff to walk down any requests that comes through, and it provides a template of where does it fit within the amendment categories. So I can't give you an answer to that, but there is a mechanism in both the specific plan, the implementation procedures manual, and the DA for addressing anybody that comes back with a change.
Well, typically, the neighbors say that's devaluing my property or whatever the case may be because that's not what I thought was a consistent use. And I guess is there a hearing for that or is it just an administrative thing at the planning department?
It would depend on what they were requesting. There are certain, and that's the function of a specific plan. A specific plan is essentially, remember your hierarchy. You have your general plan, then you have your community plans, but you also have specific plans. The specific plan is the template for development within the boundaries of that plan for the life of the plan. So the initial land use categories and design is what was approved in 2007. You now have an amendment in front of you with respect to the various changes that Michelle has outlined. You will be looking at the policy decision on those amendments. In terms of individual property owners, for example, if one of these parcels is now, has a land use category for low density and brings in a map, that would not go to public hearing again because the public hearing on the low-density use has already been vetted in front of the Planning Commission and the Board and the approval has been made. And that's how a specific plan functions. With those categories in place, anything that's consistent with those categories and the development standards that are provided in the specific plan would most likely be considered an administrative...
Modification.
Modification. I mean, if it was a minor modification of that. If it's consistent, it would simply move through the process. If, on the other hand, somebody instead of the low-density residential said, you know what, I want to do a mini mall out there, that's a land use change that was not contemplated, not brought before hearing. If that applicant wanted to go forward, that would be an amendment and it would be brought forward, similar as to this process here.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. The, I have one more quick question unless you wanted to ask.
No, go ahead.
Okay. Yeah, I think this is probably spelled out someplace in this pile of documents pretty clearly, but at any rate, you know, I think that, like, there's going to be a sheriff substation, there's going to be a major arterial road and maybe some collector roads that at some point in time, as the individual developers come forward, those will have to come into play. How's that determined and?
It's outlined in the DA. The developers are required to what we call an initial offer dedication for those public facility sites. And as they're, for instance, the sheriff's substation, that's one of the elements that we're looking at, the developer paying a fee. And as that incremental fee is accumulated commensurate with the population increase, then we would look to constructing those types of facilities. The collector, main, major thoroughfares, things like that, we would be looking under that development phase category that was approved back in 2012 with each individual developer that comes forward of what the appropriate and proportional types of improvements that they would need, not only to serve their development, but potentially provide some continuity toward, you know, as they grow along. But we would analyze that with each development, individual property owner that comes forward and require them to construct those. And their phasing plan for those development phases do come back to Planning Commission. Hopefully that answers your question. But it's a process that we'd be looking at.
So I guess when it's time for a sheriff's substation to come forward, the money will be collected and sitting there for the construction of it?
Correct.
And so is, was the sheriff going to say, we need it now or?
Well, we, I mean, we look to service population levels. They'll be paying both an operational fee for the staffing and equipment and both a facility fee for the actual construction of the facility. So the ongoing operational fees will be there to support the level of sheriff service that's necessary. And then when we accumulate enough fees and when the desire timed for those facilities to be constructed, we'd be utilizing that pot of fees to construct the facilities. But the land for those facilities would have already been offered for dedication upfront. So the land's set aside.
Okay. So I guess, I guess what I'm kind of struggling with is, you know, how this develops, you know, I mean, there's a major arterial road that runs through, it looks like it's a four-lane road through the area. And so individual developers are going to be required to put in part of that road, but you're going to have a road kind of to nowhere or is, what point is that going to be constructed all the way through?
I think we'd be looking at with each development phase, which can either be an individual developer or a group. Typically, it's, you know, a group so that they can kind of share the cost and make it more financially feasible. But we'd be looking for both permanent facilities or improvements and temporary to probably mitigate what you mentioned. You don't want a road to just dead end. And how does that transition? And with each development phase, we'll be looking at those components to make sure it's planned appropriately. But those phasing plans, we'd also be coming back to the Planning Commission for your review. If that technically answered any...
Okay. So what you're saying is that comes back to the Planning Commission then with the first project?
And they'll lay out with the first phase, kind of the network of the types of improvements that would be needed to serve for sewer water drainage roads. It's quite an extensive look at that to make sure it functions appropriately. But it does combine both permanent and temporary facilities. We look at public facilities. Is it necessary to provide connections to the park? You know, what parks do they need to build, et cetera? So we do vet that later.
Much of what we're talking about here is already part of the original approval.
Correct.
So what we're really talking about today is just the variation from the original approval to what's being proposed today. So that one issue may not change from what's already approved, but it's good to know how it works.
Well, I think the fee collection is a change that we're listening about today. So some of the things like the sheriff's substation and the parks and that kind of stuff are all not built structures, but there are fees that are being collected to do those.
Correct. It was a change in direction that we received for our board to investigate back in December of 2013. You know, part of the facilities such as neighborhood parks and trails, the developer would still be obligated to construct with each development phase that comes forward. But those other types of public amenities where maybe the service populations have an increased commensurate, those are where we're proposing to collect the fees. And ultimately, when it's the appropriate level and desire for those types of improvement, then the county would assume that obligation to construct versus the original DA where the developer was required to construct all of those facilities.
Okay, thank you. That's a complex topic, but I'll be here some more about it, but thank you.
Thank you.
Me?
Since Lotus Road, it seems to be a very sensitive issue to the neighbors, I really kind of want to understand that a little bit more and what's sort of being proposed or what's worked on. If we could hear from Mr. Graham about that and what the status is, I appreciate it.
Good morning, Mr. Graham.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name's Ken Graham, Department of Public Works. And the Locust Road study, I believe, I wasn't here when the project was originally approved, but at that time, there were concerns with folks that lived to the west of the plan area that Locust Road, they were concerned about traffic increasing. Locust Road currently goes all the way from Baseline Road and continues down into Sacramento County. With the plan area, many more homes, it does cut through the portion, that portion off to the west. The concern was traffic was going to increase dramatically. The board at that time, and even before that time, through discussions, had agreed that, hey, we want to take a look and see whether the possibility we can close that road. And I think they, the indications at that time that they really wanted to close the road, it had not been reviewed. No one really knew what the impacts of that was, and so they agreed to do this study. It was made part of the development agreement. In fact, I think it reads that before they can approve any improvement plans for any phased improvement, the applicant has to do this study. And so they have, back about six, eight weeks ago, they have approached us, we have approved a scope of work for a traffic study, and that study is commencing. I think what I expect to see happen is what happens when that road closes? When that road closes, that traffic that would have gone down Locust Road will now go elsewhere. And so we need to identify our, where will that traffic go and will it lead to any additional impacts? If it does lead to some additional impacts, then the discussion's going to be what can we do to mitigate those impacts? And the board then, and your commission, would be able to decide whether those are impacts we can live with or whether they're mitigations that we want to impose on the developer. I think that's going to be the process. I think at this point, we're probably not going to see a draft study until towards the end of January. If there aren't any issues, well, then it's probably a much simpler question. If there aren't any impacts, then people can approve that. The board would, board and your commission would have the ability to approve those changes to the specific plan. If there are some impacts, then there will be a discussion about what those impacts and are we willing to mitigate those? And again, it'll be a decision that your commission and the board gets to make at that time.
I'm assuming if the road is closed, that the alternative route is, I think it's called West Town Center, kind of runs east and west through there.
Right in here.
And I assume that that would be sort of the main arterial into that area. And it looks like that's the only road in there other than Lotus Road that would be within the development.
If Locust Road were to be closed, kind of up in this area, the intent is it would be closed at one point. So the people that live north of the specific plan area, in this special planning area that currently exists today, they will go towards the north, towards Baseline to get access in and out. People within the specific plan will be able to go to the east and get to that dire, west dire road, but they could also still proceed southward into Sacramento County. I think the intent here is not to close the entire road, it's to put a, for lack of a better word, we're not going to put a gate, but we're going to put a, something that stops the traffic right there at the border of Placer Vineyards and this existing residential area. Will not allow people to cross, but people can still, on both sides, the people on the north can use it going north and people in the south can use it going south. They just can't cross that.
So it would be on the north end of that project is where the stop would be, right? At the top end, so towards Sacramento?
Right there.
That would still be open going down, heading south.
So from Placer Vineyards, south into Sacramento would be open. Then there would be a gap in the road right at the property line with that existing community. Folks north of there would go towards Baseline.
Wouldn't, wouldn't you want a gate there for emergency purposes with a Knox lock on it?
I think there is a lot of things that will be discussed. I know at the MAC meeting, we also talked about would people be okay with it being open for pedestrian, bicycle traffic? I think those would probably be very good things, but today, we're not trying to consider that. Today, the focus is are there any impacts? Can we close it? Where will that traffic go? And is everybody okay with that?
Okay.
One more question is related to that.
Richard?
Just to the south of the North Park, there's an east-west road in there that seems to dead end at the end of the specific plan.
Is that over on the west end over there?
Yeah, and it shows an arrow on the previous plan map. It doesn't show an arrow. Is that going to, it sounds like it's being looked at by the county. Is that going to be part of the analysis here, connecting that with, I presume, Pleasant Grove Road?
I think there is a desire to do that, but it's outside some of our purview areas. Some of that may be in Sacramento County, and there is no road there today. Could that be part of the study? I think where we would start is just saying what happens when we close the road? Where will traffic go? And if traffic can be accommodated with simply that change, that would be the end of the study, I would imagine. If there are impacts, you know, one of the possible mitigations is to create some alternate connection. And if that connection wasn't part of the original plan, that might be a way of mitigating the concern. Hate to jump to that point. I think it's a possible mitigation if something is even required. There is traffic proposed to be on Locust Road in the cumulative condition. It's, you know, and it's thousands of cars, but in the scope of all the traffic here, I get that people may not want to see it, but I'm not sure intuitively if I expect there to be a major significant impact elsewhere. But until the study's done, I can't state that. But we're hoping that it'll be a pretty simple endeavor, but it may not be. And we are committed regardless to come back to the community and everyone to share the results. And if there are impacts, we will discuss those impacts and what we can do about them.
Okay. Thank you.
Last question.
Wayne?
Is the developers receptive to closing the road? And I know this is, you know, for your study, but are, you apparently are open to the possibility of shutting off the road there as long as there's alternative means of access.
Sure. You know, to answer appropriately, I'd say, as an engineer, I love to have more road connections. That gives us more options and I, you know, when all sorts of things can happen and there's accidents, you have more options. I don't think that's where the decision's going to be made here. Here, I think the board was clear that they were supportive if it could work. And so I see our role as to showing, will it work and how will it work? And then people can decide, are they willing to live with those impacts or non-impacts depending on what the study shows?
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Ken.
You're welcome.
Are you going to stay for a little while?
I will be here in case there's any more questions.
Okay, that'll be great. Okay, I think at this point, if there's no other... Thank you, Ken.
You're welcome.
Are you going to stay for a little while?
I will be here in case there's any more questions.
Okay, that'll be great. Okay, I think at this point, if there's no other questions, the staff will turn to the applicant and offer them a microphone and a opportunity to present their side of the project.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Tim Tarran. I'm here on behalf of the Placer Vineyard Owners Group. Kent McDermott is here, who's the project manager for the, for the plan area. Um, Mike Smith, who's with McKay and Somp Civil Engineers is here. We have a whole bunch of our owners here, too. I won't bother introducing all of them. So, um, we spoke at your last workshop and encouraged you to support the staff recommendation and move this forward to the board. Will you reiterate that request today? We hope you will support the staff recommendation and approve the, um, the application. Just a couple of comments. First of all, on parks and trails, the parks and trails as originally designed, well, let me take a step back. One of the major considerations on parks and trails is that the future homeowners and business owners in this community will need to pay to maintain them. And one of the things that we saw about the 2007 approvals was that the way the parks and trails were designed was not efficient and was going to cost a whole lot of money, much more money than probably was feasible to maintain and operate. And so the changes in the parks and trails that are before you today, for the most part, are really just an effort to make the park and trail system much more efficient to operate and maintain in the future, so that the costs don't become burdensome on future homeowners and business owners. That's number one. There was a comment about SMUD. Uh, I can address that pretty easily. Every time a tentative map come through, which you will see, SMUD will look at that map and make sure that their separation requirements have been maintained. So that's really an implementation design. And I think SMUD's just putting you on notice that you're going to hear from us again. And we know that, that's part of the, the normal process for, for SMUD. There was a comment about, or a question about how infrastructure will be installed in a way that won't leave dead-end roads, for example. Your staff has been very, very, uh, good and insistent about requiring that we constantly show phasing details as this project builds out, so that all properties will be efficiently served and all infrastructure will be constructed in logical, uh, increments. So there aren't dead-end roads, uh, water systems are looped, there's two points of access, those kinds of things. So the development agreement includes, as well as the specific plan, but primarily the development agreement, includes very stringent phasing requirements. Finally, Locust Road, um, I think it was said, but we, we are, our obligation under the original approvals, and that's not changing, is to fund the study and get it done so that the, uh, board, you and the board can make a decision. We do not have a position one way or the other on whether it should be closed. It's not for us to, to suggest. We, we have now started that study. Uh, it didn't start earlier primarily because of the lawsuits and the recession. And it wasn't really until about two years ago that this project really geared up again. And, um, when this issue came to our attention, six, eight months ago, whatever it was, that's when we immediately started discussions with the county to, to get this study scoped and our funding underway to get it done. So that's all I have. I'd like to, by the way, thank your staff again, as I did the last meeting, your entire staff, for all the diligent, very hard work that they've done to get us to this point. We're very excited because we think with this round of amendments, we're going to be in a position to actually start construction. There's a lot of work to do before we start construction, probably still a year and a half away. But without these, we can't do it. With these, we think we can. So with that, happy to answer any questions. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to perhaps reserve the opportunity to respond to some public comment, if there's public comment. It may not be necessary, but I'd like to reserve that opportunity.
We might just have another question or two for you. Is there any, anyone that has any this time? I have one question.
Sure.
If you could stand here and look in your little rose ball.
Right.
When do you think the west end of this project would likely develop?
That's a really good question. Uh, just based on my experience, I, I think it's 10 to 15 years away.
Okay.
It may be as much as 20 years away, um, unless somebody really has a special need to extend the infrastructure that far. Because, you know, the infrastructure's really coming mostly from east to west. So it could happen earlier. I mean, I never say never. But 10 to 15 years would be, I think, a reasonable estimate, maybe longer.
Well, the reason I, obviously the reason I ask the question is it also gives both the people that live out there in the county further opportunities through time to maybe alleviate issues that are a problem.
Well, sure. Now, I want to say, our first phase, which is actually, has been submitted, includes some properties towards the west end. It's not just the east end. It includes some properties over on that west end. But if you, if you really wanted to ask if, um, let me get my little pointer out here. I know how to work this one. If you wanted to talk about this area here, I think that's the area I'm saying. Kent, is that fair comment? That's, that's a long, that's quite some time away.
Okay. Well, I, I wasn't trying to.
No, I understand, but.
I just trying to create a attitude here.
But I, unfortunately, or fortunately, I have been around long enough that I have actually seen projects that started and finished 25 years later. And I've seen, and actually even then, they're not completely finished because there's still some infill pieces. Uh, we were talking about this the other day, a couple, a client of mine and I, started, started a project 25 years ago, and it's almost done. Believe it or not, but it takes that long for these projects to actually build out.
Well, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
I'd like, what I'd like to do now, if it's, uh, appropriate, is to offer the microphone to, at first, anyone that's representing groups of people, if there is such a, a person out there. And those people have, um, five minutes to speak as a limit. And if any of you choose to speak individually, I would like you to limit your comments to three minutes, if you would. And well, you'll notice a little blinking thing in front of you. And so when it finally turns red, I suggest you try to abbreviate the rest of your conversation. Any rate, I'd like to welcome you up and invite you to come comment if you choose to and give us your name clearly and, uh.
If you'll forgive me, I'm going to use my notes. My name is Kelly Welty, and I live at 8815 Elwin Avenue in Alberta. And Elwin Avenue is South Locust. So I am, my neighborhood is the neighborhood that will be impacted by the redirection of traffic. And, um, we're a low-density, um, agr, rural agriculture, um, residential area. And so I have a few, several of my neighbors are here with me today. And I just want to talk, share some of my concerns. The desire that my neighborhood not be subjected to increased traffic volume as a result of the Placer Vineyards development, um, which currently, all of the traffic, um, will be from that area, that western area. If, if it goes as follows, and even, even without the, the closure of that road, it would still be directed my direction, our direction, South Locust. We actually live just across the Sacramento Placer County line. According to Sacramento County and community development, um, in my discussions with them, there's, they have no, um, they had no knowledge of it being such, such a busy area, such a, become such a busy road. And there are plenty of other ways that they can go. One that was mentioned was the Town Center Road and then the 18th Street. And our thought is that we would really like to have it closed off at our end as well. Um, and make Locust, you could find different areas, different ways to use that land of that, of that road. But we would like to have Locust closed off to traffic both directions. And I, let's see. There's, okay, I already mentioned the several, the several roads that could be used. And I just thought of, in my experience, I remember, um, having roads closed that have been used between Sacramento County. And I remember having to travel from school to school and using Cook Riolo Road. And there came a time when that road was closed at the Placer Sacramento County line. I had to find a different way to go. That's, um, and so I don't think it would be that inconvenient. And another concern is that we do have, um, Alpha Middle School, which is just south of the Placer Sacramento County line, which is right on Elwin, which is rather busy. And, um, I hope that you'll listen to us and that you'll, um, think about that. Because I, I really feel it will not impact the development if it's closed at both sides.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Isaac Garcia. I live on, uh, 319 Los Garcia's Lane. It's, uh, a little point out. And, uh, I represent my grandfather, Joseph M. Garcia, my grandmother, Esperanza Garcia. They live in 9030 Elwin, right in the front of, uh, Elwin, that turns into Locust. And Greg and Eleanor Garcia, and, uh, Mondo and Dorothy Garcia. We all live on Los Garcia's Lane. And we agree with, uh, my neighbor here about the increased traffic. So I just wanted to state that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone like to be next?
Hi, uh, Lou Mitchell. I reside on Watt Avenue, about a hundred feet south of the Placer border, which, uh, is adjoins to the Cook Riolo and also connects to the Placer Vineyards. And I, I'm speaking today because the traffic level due to construction that's already begun in the Cook Riolo and farther north in west, west Placer County has increased dramatically to the point where, uh, it's extremely difficult for me to get out, in or out of my driveway safely. So, um, the developers are talking about phasing in that main artery, which you refer to as the road to nowhere. Well, when I first moved there in 2012, it's kind of what it was. There was no destination north of me on Watt Avenue, the baseline. Now there is, and I'm looking at end dumps and cement mixers and doing 45, 50 miles an hour across my driveway. And also, right there at the county line, I know you'd call it a small hill or berm, creates a blind spot. I cannot see northbound or, south, north or southbound beyond there. And I'm only a hundred feet from that. So getting out of my driveway is, uh, very dangerous. And I also have concerns about water. I'm on a well. You know, you guys are going to put in a bunch of water wells, and I'm going to have to chase my well down to keep water on my property, or what's the future of my property? Where will I egress? How am I going to egress onto a four-lane, six-lane road? These are some of the questions I need to know. I'd like to know if you guys could help me out with that.
Okay, thank you, Lou. It's my understanding that this project is operating, will operate off of surface water. Isn't that the case? Which won't, so there won't be wells as part of the project? So you should not be affected, at least in that area. Would anyone else care to come forward? Sure.
I'm, uh, Bruce Greco, and I'm, I'm representing my neighborhood, so I, like, five minutes. Um, I'm in the.
There we go.
I'm in the, the SPA area that is um, right here. This is my neighborhood.
Uh huh.
So the community there has rejected the proposed amendment. And our MAC board has rejected the proposed amendment, as said earlier during the presentation. And it, it really relates to the extreme decrease in park acreage, uh, as well as the Class 1 trail system, the reduction in, in miles of that. If you look at uh, the changes in the parks that have occurred just, you know, near our neighborhood. You know, there's, there's this park that's gone. There's this park that's gone. There's this park that's gone, and there's that park that's gone. So the four closest parks to our neighborhood are gone. And those parks are not, they're, they're part of, you know, they're in the middle of neighborhoods that are yet to be built, basically. I mean, so those parks are gone from these new homes also. And then if you look at the the Class 1 trail diagrams, you know, we were promised in '07, you know, good access to the trail system of the development. And we had Class 1 trails, you know, one trail, two trails, three trails, four trails, leading into the system from our border of my neighborhood. And then with the revisions, we just have one trail leading from my neighborhood into the development. And, you know, those type of changes, we just feel are, are too extreme. Though we are, we are completely open to, to working with Placer County planning staff and a develop, developer to come up with a happy, you know, median. You know, one example is, you know, three trails here on our border are removed as part of the proposed amendment. You know, a solution from our end is, well, with this, part of this Locust Road closure, where there's going to be the closure of the road, but some form of a barrier, a gate that allows emergency vehicles to go through there. So there's, there's going to be, we have buffers surrounding us with a berm. So there's going to be a break in the berm there anyway for this emergency vehicle access. That's a perfect place to have a Class 1 trail that would head and join up with this other trail system that they're building. And so in that region right there, you, you can remove three trails, you can replace it with one. In that region, I just gave them, uh, a 66% reduction in trail mileage in that region. So we're happy to, to work with the developer and come up with, with a plan that isn't quite so drastic, that involves changes that allow them to reduce total acreage of parks and total miles of trails, and is more of a happy medium and has our input so that changes that can be made aren't as drastic because maybe things are just switched in location and serve our needs and allow them to have their needs of reduction in total mileage or total acreage. Oh, I'm running out of time. I got to run on to a topic that, to me, is very critical. As was presented in, in the presentations with the slides, I wish I could flip through them. But it has been told to the board of supervisors that what they were look. Sorry, what they were looking at was a change of 6.2 acres per 1,000 residents, as far as acres of, of parks. And they were asked to, to go to the county minimum of five acres. And so about a year ago, they make, the county is amenable, I don't know if I'm pronouncing that right, amenable to a reduction of active parks, facilities from 6.2 acres per 1,000 residents to the county's general plan standard of five acres per 1,000 residents was basically the, the minimum. So they're asked to go from 6.2 to five acres per thousand. And the 6.2 figure is in no way accurate. It, uh, the only way to come up with 159 acres for the proposed amendment, reaching this, this five acres per 1,000 residents is basically to exclude the population of the SPA area, the special planning area. So I have, um, if you look on table three dash four of the original Placer Vineyard's specific plan, I have eight seconds left, hoping you can let me finish. It lists there, the estimated population is 32,814. And the special planning area population is listed as, sorry, I should put on my glasses, 1,028. And so when you subtract the SPA area population from the total population listed, you basically, this is the number, 3,000, or 31,786. And so this is the number that they use to compute the, um, meeting the requirement of five acres per 1,000 residents. So it's 159 acres of active park and then proposed amendment divided by this population number, and you get 5.00 per 1,000 residents. That's where the five comes from. But if you're going to use this population number with this proposed acreage, then you need. need to use the same population number with the original acreage. And the original acreage is listed as two-ten. It was on like, I don't know if it was slide number two or whatever that she put up. Um, and it's listed in table three dash two of the Plaza Vineyard specific plan, that the parks have an acreage of two hundred and ten acreage. Uh, you're welcome to look at these if you want me to bring them up to you. So if you use the same population number and you use two hundred and ten acres, you come up with six point six acres per one thousand residents, not six point two acres per thousand residents. And, you know, we're going from five to six point six. It's not five, it's six point two. And you guys have been handed the same, the same numbers. We saw it on one of the slides, they, if she wants to bring it up, it says six point two acres as existing. So you look at the map, um, from two thousand and seven, and whether it's you or it's the Board of Supervisors, and in the case of the Board of Supervisors, it's a year ago, they're looking at this map, they're looking at the dark green, which indicates these parks, and they're told that represents six point two acres per thousand residents. And then they're asked, are you willing to go, accept amendment, to go down to five acres per thousand residents? So they're thinking six point two to five, they're looking at the earth, saying, mm, well, I really don't want to go that far, but, you know, we're having financial problems. Okay. And what would be their decision if, in fact, they were presented with the correct information and they knew that, you know, these dark green spots indicate all of the parks that didn't represent six point two, that represented six point six acres per thousand residents? And they were asked to still go down that greater jump down to five acres per thousand residents. Their decision then may have been different. They may not have made that motion that they were, you know, a motion that said they were willing to go to, from six point six to five. They may not have said that because they were asked to go from six point two to five. And I think this is all straightforward numbers and it's a critical, it's a critical aspect of this, this proposal. I don't, does anyone have any questions? For me just to re-
Why don't-
-say I'm wrong in some manner.
Why don't we let this question stand and we'll maybe get an answer at some point later on? Thank you.
Like today?
Yeah.
I just-
We'll ask the question at some point.
Okay. Uh, uh, I just, I would personally like, um, after it's proven that my figures are all right, that there's a formal email letter sent to all of the different district supervisors, making them aware of this, making that, you know, telling them how it might have influenced their decision a year ago to even start this process. Um, and I'd like a copy of that so that I can follow up and make sure that they receive the proper information. I feel the only legitimate thing to do at this point, the only honorable thing to do is to, I've expressed the willingness for the community to work with the developer and planning as far as finding a happy medium. Um, I just don't think you should approve the proposal as is with this incorrect information of six point two versus six point six. And I don't really know how to process, I just don't want to surprise where all of a sudden, two days before the Board of Supervisors are going to meet, that's my first opportunity to see that it's even on the agenda, and then I have to try and scramble and address this. And the hundred and eighty-seven pages of staff reports on this is only available to me, the public, a week before today. And so, you know, I don't even get the opportunity to see these numbers or address these things. You know, this is, this right here is the extent of the, the text that is provided to the MAC board and it represents a hundred and eighty-seven pages of information.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Bruce.
And I want to thank Ken for the Locust Road stuff. Once he knew our concerns and he got on board and once the developer put the money up for the study, he's been wonderful and we appreciate his efforts on figuring out the best way to close Locust Road. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Would anyone else care to come comment?
My name is Bob Slakey. I own property, uh, just north of baseline. And just a question, what is the plan for widening baseline and Rego Road?
Would you say that again, please? I'm sorry, I didn't hear it.
What, what's the plan for widening Rego Road and baseline in the course of this development?
Okay. Okay, well, staff, do you want to tackle that? Is that, is there-
Just that, Ken?
Ken, yeah? Well, if you want.
So as part of the project, the, the development will widen all of baseline road throughout the county and in corp- and in conjunction with the city of Roseville, that also has some development going on, on the north side of the roadway, particularly between Watt and Fittiman. The timing of all of those improvements are, are going to be based on the development phasing that the applicant puts forward. They are required by the development agreement to show what they're going to build, and there will be an analysis so to make sure that baseline gets built in an orderly fashion, most likely from east to west, uh, most likely going from four lanes and then eventually to six lanes. It is meant to be six lanes. So that's within the county. There are also provisions for the development to pay for some improvements in Sutter County, particularly intersection and lighting or signal lighting improvements at Pleasant Grove South, Pleasant Grove North, and Natomas Road, I believe it's called. Uh, so those three intersections are also getting improved. And then we are participating in the cost of the interchange at Riego and Highway ninety-nine. So that really, so in Sutter County, we're, we're, we're working on three intersections and we're participating in the cost of the interchange. Us with the city of Roseville will be phasing the improvements along baseline, uh, throughout the life of the project. It won't happen all at once, that's a huge project, I think sixty million or so. It will occur over time as the development needs it.
Okay. Thank you, Ken. Would anyone else care to come forward?
My name is Stephanie Davis. I live in, on Watt Avenue in Sacramento County. We're located right at the end of the arrow where BRT will eventually be. And my question is, when will Watt Avenue be, uh, what phase will it be expanded to four lanes? Because it will directly impact my home.
Okay. I think what we'll do is wait for the rest of these questions so you don't have to get up every time. We'll get, we'll get an answer, though.
And additionally, additionally, um, I think it's wonderful that the staff is working with the developer. I'd like to know who's going to work with the residents.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else? See, oh, here comes a lady. She's not leaving, is she? No.
Good morning, Commission, Board members, staff, developers, and applicant. My name is Tammy Fair. I am the granddaughter of Ralph Hurtel, H-E-R-T-E-L. Many of you may know him. He's first generation American, born and raised in Nebraska, got a college degree, moved out to California to be a school teacher. That didn't last very long. He sent for his father. They sold the farm, they came out to California and they bought land, not just little land. They bought whole city blocks and they made money. They bought five hundred acres, a thousand acres, two thousand acres, it didn't matter. They bought, they made small little, single-family homes, small commercial real estate space. They made money. They helped develop Sacramento County, Yolo County, Placer County, Eldorado County, Nevada County, Sutter County. They bought tracts of land on Realinda Boulevard, Lemon Hill, Bell, Elkhorn, Alberta Road. They knew what it was like to be a good steward of the land, what it was to be like to put up ten houses to an acre, even ag land, one, two, five acres. They knew what it was like to have something for everyone. Now I've moved out to Alberta Road and Elk- and I am, live on Elwin Avenue across from the school. From the paperwork that I have seen on exhibit three point six point one, Eighteenth Avenue is a poor representation, whether it's, is it really a two to a four? Is it a four to a six? I've seen, from what I've seen, is not that clear. Landscapes and berms and buffers, I've heard the term low-density usage, I've not heard ag land. We're good stewards of this land, whether it's north and west or whether it's south and west. Don't dump that road down to the south. I, I see cars dumped there all the time, boats dumped there, trailers set on fire. This is rural land we're talking about, quiet people. Let's say that you live on Maple Glen, Rockwood Road, Landham Lane, and Los Sierra decides they're going to put in a stoplight. Do you let that stoplight go through? No. You put up a stop so that traffic has to either go east or west on Arden Way. I propose not to take away your fees and I don't want you to stop what you're doing, but I request that you, because you're creating a brand-new road, move the movement of that road out to Realinda Boulevard. And the reason why I say this, because of the fact that Elwin Avenue has not a single commercial business on it, not a single retail storefront. You have small business owners on Realinda Boulevard that would welcome the opportunity to expand their business and you would welcome those that live south in Sacramento County to keep their peace and quiet and their, and their very rural way of living for our next generation. Thank you very much. And Ken, I really would like to talk to you. So, we'll talk later. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing no one else come forward, then we'll close off the public comment and, and offer the rebuttal to the applicant if they'd care to.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. Uh, Tim Tarran again. Uh, just a few comments. First of all, on, um, especially with regard to Locust Road and Alberta residents, um, uh, again, I'll say, we will support, uh, the, the applicants support whatever you and the board decide to do with Locust Road, north or south. That will be the results of that study and a decision, and we will support that. Um, second, with respect to the Watt Avenue residents that spoke, this amendment is not changing anything that was, that, uh, regarding Watt Avenue that, uh, was approved in the two thousand and seven plan. So whatever has happening on Watt Avenue is happening as a result of the two thousand and seven approval, not because of any amendment that we're requesting of you today. And finally, with respect to Mr. Greco's comments, especially about the parks, this is a very curious situation because, um, those, the parks in the plan are open to the public and that mean, includes members of the, uh, residents of the SPA. But those parks were not designed to serve residents of the SPA. The SPA came forward in two thousand and seven and said, we don't want to be any part of this plan. They were designed, the parks and the trail system were designed to serve the residents of the urbanizing area of Plaza Vineyards. Um, and I will note that the SPA is not paying for the construction and not paying for the maintenance of those parks. Now that said, um, we were instructed in two thousand and seven to make that berm, a solid berm and no connections to the SPA. Uh, there were never any trail connections, with one major exception, which I'll, I'll note in a minute, to that trail system. Uh, if, if they want those connections someday, all that has to be done is breaks in this, in the SPA, in the, um, in the, uh, the berm need to be, be made so those connections can be made. Now, the one important exception here is a multi-use trail, which is, um, a trail that goes all the way around the southern boundary of the project. That in two thousand and seven, that actually, uh, the SPA folks wanted that trail for equestrian uses. And so we designed it to be a multi-use trail, accessible to the SPA and their residents as well as our plan area residents, and, um, conducive to, uh, equestrian use as well as jogging and walking and, and, uh, mountain biking. Um, uh, the, uh, that trail, we have improved as a result of this amendment, as I think staff pointed out to you, because there was a break in that trail right around this area, which we've been able to overcome and we now showing, and that's kind of in this amendment, that trail will go all the way to Gibson Ranch and actually beyond. So that trail is actually being improved for the benefit not only of the urban residents but the SPA residents. So, um, for the reasons that I mentioned before regarding the, the efficiency of the parks, plus the comments I just made, I think the park amendments are well thought out and, and actually necessary. And I won't mention one other thing, we really don't understand the argument regarding the acreage of, or the six point two, six point seven to five. I'm not even sure it's relevant because the important thing was, and what we asked the board for, and the board gave direction to staff and to us, that they were okay with us going to five acres per thousand, which is your general plan standard, regardless of where we started from. We were going to five acres per thousand. That was clear and that's what this amendment represents. Okay? So those are my comments. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Any questions?
I have one.
Yes, continue.
Do you have any idea how many homes we're talking about on that west end, which would be by that Locust?
I don't, not off the top of my head.
There's low density and, and, uh, medium density on that end. I, what I'm trying to understand is if now you have residents on the south wanting the road closed, you sort of make that, unless there's a, a western access out, you make that a big cul-de-sac. And so I'm trying to figure out, okay, how many homes, residents, does that impact?
I don't even know if the scope of the study that Mr. Graham is conducting includes closure on the south, so I can't answer that question, other than I know, yeah, those are all low-density here. And as you can see, there's a lot of open space-
Right.
-uh, here. But, uh, I can't give you a number. Maybe someone else in my team can, but I can't. Okay?
I would like to hear from Ken.
Okay.
Well, this, uh, see if anyone else has additional questions here.
Questions?
Okay, this may be a question for staff.
Richard?
In the, in the documentation in relationship to parks, I see a, a figure that says a hundred and, hundred and fifty acres.
Hundred and fifty-nine acres, yes.
Well, it's, in some of the tables, it talks about a hundred and fifty acres, and then there's, uh, eighteen acres of, uh-
Yes. In lieu.
In lieu.
Yes.
And then there's two acres.
Yeah, the two acres is a credit because we're donating, grant, dedicating the land for the park maintenance facility. We're getting credit for that. The eighteen acres, let me explain there. There are joint, proposed joint-use parks with the schools here. So every school site is proposed that about two acres of those school sites will be park that's open to the public. So instead of asking for more acres, we are instead paying and in lieu the equivalent to eighteen acres, nine school sites times two acres, eighteen acres of developed parkland, that's fully developed parkland, will be paying that in cash so that the cit- that the, the county and the school districts will have funds available to develop those park sites on the school locations. Okay? Staff can explain that probably even better than I can, but that's where that came from.
So that's in addition to the hundred and fifty-nine acres?
That's correct.
Okay. So it's actually twenty acres on top of that?
Eighteen acres on top of that.
Well, plus the two acres, yeah.
Plus the two, yeah.
Yeah, and somehow, I guess-
That's two.
A hundred and fifty acres, that might be just a typo, but I think I saw-
Let Michelle answer that-
Okay.
-because she's, I'm sure, much better able to do that than I am.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions?
Concluding.
If I, if I may, Andy Fisher with the Parks Department is here to answer specific questions to the parks or to clarify what we just said.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Andy Fisher with Placer County Parks. Calculators are smoking this morning, boy, I tell you what. Let me see if I can shed a little light on the difference between a hundred and fifty and a hundred and fifty-nine. A hundred and fifty acres is a land use figure. It is the land use, if you look at that map, the green park acreage is a hundred and fifty acres. So let me tell, show you if I can how that parses out to a hundred and fifty-nine worth of credit. There are twenty-two acres of all that green area there that are private parks over toward the far east end, and typically, and in this situation, we only give half credit for private parks. So, uh, out of that hundred and fifty acres, eleven of those, those twenty-two acres of private parks are not credited against our, our hundred and fifty-nine acre standards. So subtract eleven from a hundred and fifty, add back in an in lieu fee credit of eighteen acres, and then an additional two acres. Uh, what happened in the two thousand and seven plan is that the, there were park corp yards within the two community parks. Those were taken out and they were- Those were taken out, and they were, that, so there's more room for recommendities in the community parks, and where the corp yards were is now going into the corp yard area underneath the high-power lines. But we still gave them credit for that, because we do that. In Granite Bay, we did that and all throughout the county. That's part of your whole park package is, is what you need to maintain those parks. So, that's how, if you subtract out the, the private portion and then add in the in-lie fee in the, the corp yard area, you come up with 159. Make a little better sense?
Let me see my calculator smoking here.
Yeah.
So, you have 159 minus 11?
Plus 18, plus 2. Am I right?
And so, that comes out to 159 again?
Yeah. That's how we get to the credit value of 159 acres of parks. Public, community park, or community and neighborhood parks. So, so the 150 is land use. When you look at the land use map, there are 150 acres of park land on the ground, some of which is, is not given full credit.
Oh, you're subtracting 11 from 150?
That's right.
Okay. Now, now I'm getting closer.
Thank you.
All right.
I guess, Ken, you had some questions you wanted to deal with. Is that okay?
I'll try, and, and I heard a couple, and if there's some additional ones, perhaps you can help me out and remind you of those. One question was regarding the phasing of Watt Avenue, and trying to reiterate again. First off, and I, I know Tim Tarran already mentioned this, the project's already been approved, we're just looking at a couple of these amendments that are really centered around the park. But in terms of what is proposed for, for Watt Avenue, it will be phased, and again, is a 40-plus-million-dollar project with a huge bridge going over Dry Creek. It is proposed to be four, and I even think six lanes going into the future. It will happen in phases. Probably the first thing people will see will be the intersection at PFE and Watt to be improved, because what we typically see in these roadways, the intersections become the first bottlenecks, we open up those, and then eventually, we do the widening. And so, again, it will occur over time, depending on the actual phasing that they propose to do. As far as working with the community, I, I definitely suggest we, we do typically work with our municipal advisory committee. Some folks probably aren't plugged into those. I'm happy to help people get plugged into those. Of course, most of that was done prior to 2007, when this project was first being developed. Again, what we're looking at today are just some, some modifications to that overall plan. The, there was a discussion about Locust Road and particularly where it meets up with Sacramento County, and Tim Tarran mentioned correctly, today, the study, and the study we were directed to do was really focused on a break up... There it is. The break right up there. The thought of having a break here isn't part of that study yet. That's something that can be, we're happy to do, I guess we can add any work. That definitely complicates things. The more breaks you create, the more, the less places there are for traffic to go. The more we look at, the harder it gets. But that isn't what's being studied at this moment. Only the break at the top. And I think those are the questions I heard, but I heard maybe Commissioner Nader had a question.
Well, I was just going to say, if you did close that road on north and south, again, it makes it a big cul-de-sac for the most part. And the one alternative would be, as I think was mentioned earlier, where there was kind of this arrow on the old plan, as you can see on the top, that went over to Pleasant Grove Road, is that that Town Center Drive would then punch on over to Pleasant Grove Road. Is Pleasant Grove Road just a two-lane road right now?
I believe it is up in that area, and I, if I'm not mistaken, some of this area beyond may even be outside the county, although I'm not quite sure. It may not be totally our, within our control to make a new connection to a, a current road in Sacramento County.
I think it looks like on the map, it's right on the county line.
The road is.
Pleasant Grove.
All right. But that would still, but I do believe that is not our road. It is definitely their road.
But as a two-lane road, it doesn't offer a, a good way of getting in and out of that area?
Absolutely. I, or, or it would allow for some, but it's important to note even Locust, I believe, is also a two-lane roadway, proposed to be a two-lane roadway at this point in time. So, it is not proposed to be widened to a four-lane, large roadway.
Thank you.
Did he miss anything, guys?
Well, I guess, kind of scratching my head here, if, if we're taking a look at that whole west end there, and currently, we're just really looking at that one closure of Locust, what would the options be if we, if it turns out that this kind of does become a dead-end cul-de-sac in here, to take a bigger-picture look at what's going on here? Maybe you said you were going to do that if the issue is developed.
Right now, the, the Placer Vineyard specific plan is approved for what you see, or at least on the upper side. That includes the entire roadway network. The board has directed us, and we are doing the, the look at the one closure at this point, kind of halfway through, to see what that, what happens with that. Obviously, the more changes that start getting contemplated, that bill is being borne by the applicant, not by the county or the taxpayer. So, I'm not, it's not my position to ask them to do anything over what has been required of them thus far.
Agreed to, yeah.
Pardon?
Agreed to.
Yeah, agreed to, correct. Correct.
Okay, well, that, you know, that answers my question. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other questions to staff at this time, by any of the commissioners? If not, then I'm going to ask EJ to lead us through this process and, and guide us in making...
What, what we'll do is we'll put up, I'll have Michelle put up the recommendation up there, and then I'll have her walk you through the actions that we're asking you to make a recommendation on today.
Thank you, Michelle. Go ahead.
I'll try not to mess it up. Pursuant to the staff report before you, there's, there's the findings that are included, as well as these following recommendations, which do include the recommendation to consider the errata sheet that you were provided. So, the first one is adopt the addendum to the Certified Placer Vineyard Specific Plan Final Environmental Impact Report, and adopt the amendment to the Placer Vineyard Specific Plan Mitigation Monitoring and Reporting Program. Approve the aforementioned amendments to the Placer Vineyard Specific Plan. Approve the amendment to their Placer Vineyard Specific Plan Land Use and Development Standards, which I believe is your Appendix A to your report, to the specific plan. And lastly, to approve the second amended and restated development agreement with the changes noted on the errata sheets you were provided today.
Okay.
Thank you.
And your, your motion will be in the form of a recommendation to the board.
To the board.
All our recommendations. If the commission would like to consider one motion that includes all of the subparts, you certainly may do that.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I would make such a motion, and I'd be happy to read through it again if we need to, or if I can refer to what has been read in. I'd, I'd be happy to do that also.
Okay. So, we have a motion then, as displayed before us. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further questions or comments? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Mr. Gray, is that Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Denio sustains Mr. Sevison?
Yes. Now, is there, since this is going to the Board of Supervisors, I don't believe there's a traditional appeal.
That is correct. It's going to this recommendation to the board.
Your appeal opportunity will be to the Board of Supervisors when they hear this same item, and I'm not sure when that'll be, but probably in...
Yes, next month.
Next month, is it?
Correct. We're looking at December 9th.
December 9th, okay. And we thank you for your comments. We hope that we can resolve any further issues through this study and, over time, and we appreciate your comments and your coming to listen and guiding us. We're going to take about a five or 10-minute break between items here, and then we'll reconvene with the next item.
No, whenever they're, whenever they're ready. Give me three minutes. Three minutes. Oh, I can go fast. What's he doing? What's Larry doing? What's Larry doing? That's your glasses, use your glasses. Yeah, yeah.
And... George, you're gonna lead us through this, are you?
Yes, I am.
Okay. So...
Good afternoon, my name is George Wazosko, I'm the supervising planner with the Placer County Planning Services Division. I'm sitting in for Lisa Carnahan today, who was unable to attend. Today before you, the proposal is to amend the previously approved Riolo Vineyard specific plan, specifically design guidelines, development standards, development agreement, and rezone 322.8 acres of the site. What that all entails is elimination of the alley-loaded medium-density homes, replacement of high-density residential land use with commercial land use designations, addition of low-density residential uses, creation of a density reserve, removal of Ag-10 residential land use, introduction of agricultural and estate residential land use within the portions of the specific plan, roadway changes, relocations of park and recreation areas, proposed modifications to development agreement. Also, you should have gotten an errata. I'll run through that really quickly. So, the first issue is affordable housing. That's just to clean up with regard to some mitigation fees that they are paying with regard to affordable housing. Also, to clarify completion of the right-of-way and acquisition for the project. More cleanup language on the dedication of open space. There are some changes to how the parks will be constructed. They're gonna be constructed with phases of the development concurrent with the phases that they are located in. And in light of the changes in the parks, we're also changing the timing of the trail improvements. So, what I'd like to do is to show you quickly. This is the original plan. Just to give you a sense of where we're at and how it was laid out. And this is what's newly proposed. So, what I'm gonna do now is I'm gonna turn it over to Dave Cook, who is representing the project, and he's gonna go over these things in more depth, and then I'll come back with regard to the recommendation, unless you have any questions for me.
Any questions?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're free to go.
Well, it can wait, it can wait. Let's go ahead with this, and then I'll ask later.
Thank you, George. Good afternoon, well, almost good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Dave Cook, RCH Group, here on behalf of HBT of Riolo Vineyards, Town Development of Sacramento. I'm gonna go through this fairly quickly. My stomach's growling. We've had a long morning, but feel free to stop me or ask any questions. As George just showed, we've got some significant changes which we feel are an enhancement to the previously approved project, and I'm gonna walk you through some of those. First of all, from an ownership standpoint, Town Controls, or HBT as the ownership entity here, controls about two-thirds of this property. So, but for the blue-colored other future participants, except for the Riolo parcel in the center here, Town Controls everything from essentially east to west. So, a quick history. In '09, the board approved this specific plan that May. In December, Town purchased this from JTS. Following December, we processed and secured approval for Parcel J, our first tentative map, if you will, and that was on the east end at PFE in Wallera, as you may recall. In December of 2012, we modified the affordable housing mitigation, removed the onsite high-density multifamily, and worked an arrangement with Acres of Hope up in Bowman, and we're still engaged with them, and as George alluded to in the errata, Town has an ongoing obligation for a few more years to pay them some additional funding. Something about working on these things in December, we're gonna miss it this year being here in November and not getting to the board until January, but we had a streak going there for a while. In the meantime, we've made a variety of changes to the specific plan that I'll walk you through. In addition, we were able to secure our 404 permit. We've also completed multiple studies that have been part of the effort leading up to this, and of course, will get us through to the board hearing. So, we've got rural, low-density, medium-density. We've got the approved commercial parcel of commercial on the east, the proposed on the west where the affordable housing was. We've modified the location of the parks, the character of some of the open space use, and in particular, the character of the existing and proposed Ag. Big difference, this major arterial that ran parallel to PFE. At one point, we looked at maybe combining these two roads. It didn't make a lot of sense. There were concerns that we had with two points of ingress and egress at Watt Avenue. So, we have proposed to eliminate that. We propose to eliminate these Ag-10 parcels. We think our approach is gonna be a better way to maintain an Ag character out here, and we think that that's gonna work for everybody's benefit going forward. We eliminated this alley-loaded density here and replaced it with a more conventional, single-family but small-lot medium-density. So, we've got two distinct neighborhoods here. Obviously, we have a void in the middle because that's a separate property owner, but we really have two entries off of PFE. We've broken this down to what we feel like is gonna be more of a suburban scale compared to what was there before. We've moved the parks to the edges of the neighborhoods where there's a better connection with the trails and the open space. And we feel that we've better assimilated this medium-density in with the rest of the neighborhoods in terms of the way that the street network lays out into that end. We think it's just gonna create a better sense of place and better neighborhood because of the way our circulation and our street connections work. These are the key changes, George already ran through them. I'm gonna go through one slide at a time, just very quickly to highlight these for you. Again, side by side, you can see very similar, the neighborhood locations because of the floodplain edge. They haven't really changed, just in the configuration and the connection of this major arterial across the creek. So, we got rid of the connection to Watt Avenue, and the bridge that will remain here will be for pedestrian, bicycles, and maintenance vehicles only. We reevaluated the rural residential parcel in between. You'll see a very different configuration. What had been previously approved had single-family homes abutting the Riolo family equestrian operations out there. We didn't think that was gonna work too well long-term. So, we basically increased the acreage and put open space along that edge instead. We, I mentioned the alley-loaded lots, I mentioned the high-density and commercial. Again, instead of the Ag-10, we added some estate lots here which are not the same size. They are up along the edge of the floodplain, but we're maintaining these areas here simply as Ag. Now, we made contract with a commercial farmer, there are a variety of things we're still exploring, but we really felt like that was gonna preserve the agricultural character far better than what uses might take place on these individually-owned and controlled 10-acre parcels. From a floodplain encroachment standpoint, the pink reflects fill that was in the previously approved plan, and the color's a little difficult to see here, but there are a couple of little pop-outs where we are now proposing the increased, excuse me, the change in floodplain encroachment. There is an increase in the number of lots that will be located in what will previously have been floodplain, but a significant decrease in the acre-feet that is in the floodplain. So, you see over that little note here on the right corner, 34 acre-feet less. So, from a volumetric standpoint, significant reductions in the amount. And then from just an overall acreage, we've reduced the impact by six acres of surface area just by eliminating this connection. And these pop-outs here were primarily those Ag-10 lots. We simplified the street sections, and we've got two basic sections now, but for a couple of roundabouts and some entry features. There were a dozen-plus street sections before, and we just felt, from a constructibility standpoint, it was gonna be far easier, plus the neighborhoods would feel a bit more consistent. I mentioned the connectivity for the trails and the parks, the open space. We've got the same number of trail connections. We've actually increased the linear footage of trails just because of the way some of these things have moved around. We've still got the connectivity that will come off of Wallera, across this center parcel, the Elliott family here, come across this bridge and get us out to Watt Avenue. But as importantly, from each of the parks, you see these trail connections up to what will be an extension of that Dry Creek Trail that was put in with the Morgan Creek, Dry Creek CFD. So, overall, we feel that we've got a better connection with the parks and the trail system. Here, the parks are more easily identified. Got a linear park here, so as people are driving down PFE Road, previously, there were homes that were backing up onto this. Now, there's a better sightline through there and open space along that entire edge. There'll be a trail here that again connects us up to Dry Creek. Not gonna go into the detail on each of the parks, but these are the conceptual designs for each. We've worked with Andy and facilities to work out not just the design, but also the phasing, as George made reference to. This is the largest of the parks that is at the north end of our center section here, and the Elliott property will be responsible to add on to that for the ultimate design. So, again, the documents and studies, we've completed the master plans and infrastructure updates, done the environmental checklist, that's resulted in the addendum to the EIR. We're still working on public services and public facilities fees, working with staff on fiscal. As you probably know, we're following Placer Vineyards in that regard. And with that, on the development agreement, once the facility, excuse me, once the fiscal studies are done, we'll know where we stand on those. And on the development agreement, it's not here, but I am going to ask for a recommendation that we extend our term. You heard some discussion on that as it related to Placer Vineyards. For us, there was no litigation that enabled us to use the tolling provision, thankfully. But because of the delay, we'd like to be able to start the clock next year when this is approved at the board, so we've got a full 20 years. We don't need to worry about coming back and asking for an extension somewhere down the road. We went to the MAC last week, we had a 3-0 vote supporting this project. We've been there probably a half dozen times as we've worked through and discussed these changes, and we found positive support all the way through that process. Here today, we hope to get to the board in January, and the plan is to start construction on that eastern parcel in next summer of 2015. So, with that, I'll hand this back to staff, or answer any questions that any of you might have.
Okay.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah.
Start the evening, work our way this way.
Okay. Dave, can you go back to this diagram for me, your new concept? Just a couple of questions that you can clarify that didn't...
Is that sufficient?
Yeah, maybe that one will even do it, because it shows. You know, you talked about the Watt Avenue connection, you know, east to west and all that, and in-between. Just for my benefit, because it looks like on the diagram you have two tie-ins to the low-density that would come over to the density on the east side of Wallera there. Those will tie in. Are there gonna be any lights from Wallera and then PFE, you know, access? Or is it all gonna be stop sign? What, just sort of explain how the improvements for PFE and Wallera and stuff?
Great, great question, I'm happy to, Ken. So, we will improve this intersection at Wallera and PFE, and that will happen fairly early on. I don't believe those improvements are required until the 178th building permit, but the improvement plans are required in advance of that. One of the recent changes to the DA, as we worked through all these clarifications and modifications with staff, is a request to have the improvement plans for the signal at Watt and PFE done sooner rather than later. Although, our plan is to march from east to west, just because this is where the initial infrastructure is located, given traffic concerns. Ken Grimm has expressed the desire to at least give the county the opportunity to build that intersection sooner if we're not ready to go. If it doesn't deem necess, if it's not deemed necessary sooner, then we'll do that when we get out to that west side. And in the DA, there are triggers for those improvements. These, and staff will have to refresh my memory, these are stop signs. There is a pedestrian signal that you may or may not recall was part of our Parcel J approval in order to make certain that kids from these neighborhoods found a safe way across the street rather than, you know, we assumed they weren't gonna come out to the main intersection and cross. So, we have, you know, these will be the two main points of ingress and egress. There'll be a secondary access here, and this is pedestrian-only.
Okay, and they're stop signs?
That's my understanding.
It's my understanding as well.
Okay, because I'm just assuming in the traffic study, you know, in whole plan, they took in, developed, the whole area developed out, you know?
Absolutely, and when we first started to pursue this alternative where we eliminated that parallel road, the initial step was to have a traffic analysis done to make certain that we weren't somehow creating problems by virtue of eliminating this parallel street. Well, it turns out that the trip distribution was such, everybody's gonna end up at these intersections anyway, so there were no problems here, and in fact, this is going to be better from a long-term standpoint because you won't have two intersections in close proximity there. But all that was analyzed as part of the environmental review, and...
Okay, that's good.
Hey, anybody else, Richard?
Okay, yeah, I guess, I guess you call it the Elliott property.
Correct.
And that shows is low-density, but the zoning isn't part of this specific plan.
That's correct. The way this works is that these non-participants, so this is Elliott here, Lund here, this is Friswald here, they have that designation, but until they come in and they do their project-level EIR... project-level EIR, then we don't do anything more than leave the attributed density that was granted at the original approval of the specific plan. So they will have to come in on a, on separate action. When this was approved originally, it was programmatic for them from an EIR standpoint and project level for the JTS, now the HPT. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I think it clarifies that part of it. And then, I know when we looked at the parcel J before...
Correct.
One of the concerns was that this is a lot of development on a, crucially a cul-de-sac system. And so one of the considerations at that time when we approved it was that there would be a road connection from J across the Elliott property into the rest of the project, which would give you actually two points of ingress and egress for all the development that's going to go in there. Is that still in the cards, or is that out of the cards?
No, that is still in the cards, and I'm glad you raised that point. There is an addition of the pedestrian crossing here. There is emergency vehicle access until such time as the Elliott property develops. But the plan schematically and just logically will be that these two roads will connect. This will serve as the main entry off of PFE four, both properties here, and then provide that connection back to Walsera on this other side. So that remains the same as was approved for parcel J.
Okay, that, but that may or may not happen for a long time?
Yeah, there's no guarantee of the timing. We have continual, infrequent conversations with Elliott. They're not a development firm. That's just a, you know, it's a family holding. We don't know what their timing will be on that. So on an interim basis, we do have this emergency vehicle access through here. So that'll give us the secondary access.
Okay. No secondary access for the parcel to the left?
No, because now, if we find that there is an issue once we get over here and Elliott still hasn't developed, at that point, it might make some sense for us to negotiate some sort of interim connection. That was not, as I recall, a condition of parcel J, the emergency access addressed...
Oh, right, yeah. I think, I remember that discussion, and I guess in my mind at that time, part of the reason why this was okay is because there would be a connection to the west.
Right.
Which would give better circulation to entries.
Remember, this is about 106 units, and although not perfect, that it's only got one primary entry from a traffic study standpoint. And from a functional standpoint, I think that between the developer and staff, we found that that was going to be workable. Clearly, we'd like to see this connection made, but until Elliott comes along, and then this piece has got to come in here, because that center entry basically straddles the property lines. So it won't make any sense to make this connection until one or both of these are starting to move along.
Okay. Is, I did read somewhere where one of these parcels is in the Williamson Act. Is that the problem?
The Frisvold parcel was in the Williamson Act, and although those predates our involvement, my memory, and staff may correct it if I'm off-base, they were ready to file for non-renewal if they remained in. As this thing approached the hearing, they decided not to participate. They were concerned about the fee burden and some other issues, and so they pulled back. Again, we remain in contact with them, and hopefully, once we go through the modifications that we're going through, hopefully, we're going to see them come back to the table and start to get engaged.
Okay.
We do need to have a continuing, you know, improving market to help aid that, I'm sure.
Okay. So all the blank parcels are non-participating, and that would be the, okay, status?
Right. So primarily, these three, Lund, Elliott, and Frisvold, the farming operation appears is not at all involved. Just simply shown as an ag use.
Okay, thank you.
Wayne?
I know you said that the Walsera Road would start first, those 100 homes in that area, and you said that would probably start in '15, I think you said.
That's the goal.
What about the center part of that project? What do you think is the timing of that?
Yeah, it's really market-driven, and obviously, there's a process, there's the other infrastructure that we need to bring on. We'd like to think that that's going to be a couple of years beyond just when you start walking through the timetable for development permits and sales. And this is the logical progression to move from here, jump over on the other side of Elliott, and work our way west. But we've got some flexibility built in where we might decide, and you may recall, well, you may not, you went on the commission at the time, Wayne, but this was where JTS was going to start. They were going to work their way from Watt and PFE and go back to the east. So back to your question, I think it'll be at least a couple, three years, but again, it's really market-driven.
How many homes are in that centerpiece in there? In there, would you guess? It looks like it's more than 100.
Yeah, this is 200 and, right about 200.
Okay. Because I sort of have the same sort of kind of questions that Richard was asking related to the Elliott piece and the connection across there, because as that develops, the center part, you know, with 200 homes in there and one access, I mean, is it workable? Yeah, probably. But is it ideal? No, it's not. It would be best if you could get some sort of an easement across the Elliott's property to make that connection across there as another access in, instead of having just one access in there.
Understood.
That that's just kind of a circulation concern.
Okay. Wayne?
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions, do you? First of all, I'm sure Don Riolo, if he was still with us, would like, is happy to see the baseball diamond included in the recreation area, as much of a softball net as he was. And my next question or comment is, looking at this Elliott property, on both sides, you show the roadway split on the property line. Wait. So I guess I'm curious how you're going to deal with that, if you're going to start on the right side with the J parcel, I guess, how you're going to construct the roads if they haven't come to an agreement yet? And of course, it moves all the way to the west, as you have to have the road across, and then you got the next, the, I can't think of the name of this one, but at any rate, the other pie-shaped one, it's also split on the property line. And how do you, you're going to get, are you assuming you're going to have agreement with the Elliott's by that time?
That's a fair question, and I guess the simple answer is yes. As part of the tentative map approval for parcel J, this is something that engineering raised, and we were required, and we were able to provide a demonstration of cooperation, if you will. It wasn't a granting of easements by Elliott, but they acknowledged this configuration, both for drainage, for slope, as well as ingress and egress. And so at that point, they indicated their willingness to cooperate when we got there. And we, based on the dialogue that we've had, we hope that that's going to continue to be the case. Otherwise, you know, I have a feeling we might be back in front of you asking for some modification, but we don't anticipate that as being necessary. Again, we, as soon as town bought this, we sat down with both of those property owners and also reached out to Monty Lund, and we've been in communication with them ever since.
I guess I would turn to George or EJ and say, do we have things in the file that demonstrate cooperation from the Elliott's?
Maybe Rebecca, did you have a...
Yes, Rebecca Tabor with Engineering and Surveying. I don't have it with me, because it's part of the parcel J file, but I recollect, just like Dave was saying, we had asked for something, some kind of assurance, you know, not an easement dedication, but a letter to indicate that they were willing to work with homes by town, and we have something in the file. We had that before we came to you for the parcel J tentative map.
Thanks, Beck. Okay, any other questions, Dave? Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess now it's time to let the public have a shot at us. Is there anyone in the audience that would care to comment on this application? Ooh, that's good news. Well, if there isn't, we'll close the public comment period and bring it back to George. Do you have any closing observations?
Do I?
Yes?
I have no closing observations, except I'm going to go through the recommendations with you unless you have any questions for me.
And before we get to the recommendations, as I mentioned when we started the prior item, the errata that's provided to you before the DA are those additional items that have been agreed to between staff and the county. The applicant has raised the question and asked for the commission to consider an extension of the term. That was one of the items that was not agreed to, and I'll explain why. There is no automatic reset under state law or county code when a development agreement is amended. We didn't agree to it for Placer Vineyards. We also didn't agree to it with Riola Vineyards. However, that being said, as you heard with Placer Vineyards, they paid very dearly for a five-year extension of their term due to the lawsuits and the fact that we told that term. So they were told between 2007 to 2012. What the applicant for Riola Vineyards has asked for is essentially an extension of the term, and getting out my smoking calculator, it would be approximately additional five, five years as well. That is a policy decision. It's something that this commission can consider, and if you wish to consider it, what I'm going to suggest before we get to the overall recommendations is you discuss this particular item so that I could provide direction, if that's the way the commission wants to go, as to what would need to be amended in the DA to take forward. If the commission does not wish to consider that, I think the applicant and as well as staff would like to hear that as well, so we know how we're going forward to the board.
But we could act on the balance of the request, letting that item set aside and let the board decide it, I guess, if we want to...
You could. But let me explain the complication with that and why I'd almost encourage you to give some direction at this point is, the, when the DA goes to the board, we have to adopt it by ordinance. It has to be executed. I guess what I'm saying is, you could certainly do that. You could punt if you like, or you could take it up now and send it up with a recommendation. There's nothing legally prohibiting an extension of the term. The reason staff didn't agree to it on a staff level is, there's no right to have that when you amend an agreement. You don't automatically get to add extra years to your agreement. But it is something that this commission could consider in its review of the DA.
Okay, thank you.
You know, one thought that just comes to mind is, you know, this development agreement went through the same economic downturn as Vineyards did.
It did.
Yeah.
As a point of discussion, I guess, I don't see any problem with extending it. I mean, I understand that it's not an automatic, but the question's been asked, and I mean, for lack of a better argument, can't see any good reason why not.
Well, if you just don't like the idea.
I mean, but...
I would support it. Okay. Ken, you have a comment?
Yeah, Jeff sort of spoke for me there. I mean, I don't have any problem, because it's gone through the economic decline, just like the Vineyards and everything else.
Yes, what I'm going to suggest is, what I'm hearing is that if someone would like to entertain a motion to recommend that the amended and restated development agreement, section 1.3.1, be amended to establish the commencement of the term with the effective date of the amended agreement.
Okay.
So move.
Seconded.
Do you want to do that, is it all right to do that before we do the rest of the...
I would recommend we do that before, because it sounds like that's the only detail outside of the overall project items to deal with, so I would prefer that.
So vote on that, approve or deny it, and then it becomes part of the application?
Correct.
Okay.
Now, someone made a motion, made the...
I just said so move.
Wayne did. You seconded it.
Jeff seconded.
Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Okay, so that, having that completed now, we can go to the application of the project itself, and on the screen is a recommendation from the Development Review Committee to the Planning Commission, and is there someone that would like to...
I'll take George to it, and then we can so move it.
You want to read it to us, George?
I'll read it to you. Yeah, no problem.
Well, before we do that, Richard? Yeah, I want to say that I'm still a little bit troubled about the insurances, assurances that come with the Elliott property and the road across there. Is there, I guess we have a letter of cooperation?
We do. According to Rebecca Tabor, she has, that they've agreed to cooperate when they move forward, yes.
Maybe I'm asking from the county perspective, is that enough assurance that someday that road will be connected, or is there...
I believe it is.
Some way that we need to firm that up a little bit?
No, I believe, I believe that's as much as we can do at this point, and I believe it's enough.
I think that actually, if they fail to cooperate with the roads, that project's got to come back here for redesign of the road system in some fashion, which will trigger the fact that they've got to rearrange the roads so that they're workable automatically. So is, am I wrong on that?
That's correct. Yeah, they would have to submit, you know, new tentative maps for whatever, you know, they're proposing, and at that time, your commission would have another, you know, chance to make sure those provisions were in place.
Ken?
And then, two, on the one that crosses directly across, if they came forward with a plan, you'd just condition it that those, it has to be tied in.
If the Elliott...
Yeah.
Project comes in, we'll be looking at that connection when we review the map, right? And condition it.
And bear in mind what the commission is considering right now, and the requests that are in front of you are with respect to the policy document, the development standards. For each individual development within that specific plan, the applicant would have to, EJ mentioned, bring forward tentative maps. At that point, the details of the circulation will be looked at by the various departments.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
I'm okay.
Okay.
Yes.
You were about to read to us, George?
So essentially, bear in mind that this is all a recommendation from you to the Board of Supervisors. So recommend the adoption, recommend adopt the addendum to the Certified Riola Vineyard Specific Plan File Final Environmental Impact Report. Recommend adoption of an amendment to the Riola Vineyard Specific Plan Mitigation Monitoring and Reporting Program. Recommend adoption of a resolution approving amendments to the Riola Vineyard Specific Plan. Recommend adoption of an ordinance for a rezone of 322.8 acres of a total of 525 acres to Adopt an ordinance approving ammen, excuse me, recommend adoption of an ordinance approving amendments to the Riola Vineyard Specific Plan Development Standards. Recommend adoption of a, rather, excuse me, of a resolution approving amendments to the Riola Vineyard Specific Plan Design Guidelines, and recommend adoption of an ordinance approving the amended and restated development agreement, including the errata sheet for the Riola Vineyard Specific Plan.
Thank you.
And is further amended.
Along with the amendment.
Right.
Yes, and with the...
Exactly. You're one amendment, and your motion also includes the findings that are recommended.
Finding, with the findings. We have a motion?
Yep.
And a second?
I have a second.
Okay. Is there any other questions or comments before we move? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Oh, yes. Well, thank you all for your participation today. This does not have any appeal comments need to be read, because it's automatically going to the Board of Supervisors also. So for that reason, unless there's comments or questions by any board member, we're excused.
Excused.
Now, what do I do with all this paper?